Uh, no, not yet. Got your badge on?
Hey, I just need your help tonight, just, you know.
Well, we'll find out. Do I change? No, I don't think so.
Thank you.
Good evening, Rolling Meadows. The October 24th, 2017 meeting of the City of Rolling Meadows City Council meeting is now in session. I would ask that the Rolling Meadows Honor Guard please come forward.
Fire Department Honor Guard. Detail, up. Left, three.
Thank you, gentlemen. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon?
Here.
Budmets?
Here.
Majikis?
Here.
Gallo?
Here.
Banjar?
Here.
Diestis?
Present.
Beanbust?
Here.
With seven present, we do have a quorum. The first order of business to approve is to approve the minutes from the October 10th, 2017 council meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
It's over, man.
Ms. Majikis has made them, has been seconded. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and the minutes are approved. We have a motion to deviate, please. Mr. Cannon has made that motion and it has been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's been quite a time since we've had these many people come forward to have promotions and and new firefighters sworn in. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have the opportunity to swear in a new chief, deputy chief, battalion chief, lieutenant, and some new officers. So, the first order of business is Terry Valentino. Chief Valentino was hired as our deputy fire chief three years ago. He has been in the fire service for 40 years with the recent retirement of Chief Scott Franzkow. The city council approved to promote deputy chief to chief. His career started with the Chicago Fire Department and then on to a 33-year serving in the Arlington Heights Fire Department and two and a half years with the Schaumburg Fire Department. He is a graduate of Southern Illinois University with a BS in fire science service and completed graduate study degree in management at North Park University in Chicago. Since joining Rolling Meadows, he has been accredited by the Illinois Emergency Management Agency as a professional emergency manager. Chief, are you ready? Okay. Please raise your right hand. Terrence Valentino, do solemnly swear.
I, Terrence Valentino, do solemnly swear.
That I will obey and support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will obey and follow the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
Constitution and the laws of the state of Illinois.
The rules and ordinances of the City of Rolling Meadows.
The rules and ordinances of the City of Rolling Meadows.
And the rules and regulations of the Rolling Meadows Fire Department.
And the rules and regulations of the Rolling Meadows Fire Department.
And that I hold a devotion to duty.
And I hold a devotion to duty.
Above that, a personal gain.
Above that, a personal gain.
As I faithfully discharge said duties.
As I faithfully discharge said duties.
As fire chief to the best of my ability.
As fire chief, to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Congratulations, Chief. Chief, would you like to say a few words?
So, I'm gonna ask my father, Earl Valentino, World War II veteran, to pin. I also want to acknowledge my wife Pam and family, children, and sister here from all over the Chicagoland area. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Moxley is being promoted to deputy fire chief. He has been in the fire service for 30 years and 26 years with the Rolling Meadows Fire Department. Hired in 1991 as a firefighter, paramedic, and then promoted to lieutenant in 2007. Jeff then took the next step to battalion chief in 2012. Chief Moxley is slated to complete his BA in organizational leadership from Waldorf University early 2018. Chief Moxley is the Department 911 light arson to our regional dispatch center, is the communications radio director, and assists in all matters related to emergency dispatching and station alerting, a most daunting task. Been a long, long, long trail, Jeff. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. I, Jeff Moxley, do solemnly swear.
I, Jeff Moxley, do solemnly swear.
That I will obey and support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will obey and support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
The rules and ordinances of the City of Rolling Meadows.
The rules and ordinances of the City of Rolling Meadows.
And the rules and regulations of the Rolling Meadows Fire Department.
The rules and regulations of the Rolling Meadows Fire Department.
And that I hold a devotion to duty.
And that I hold a devotion to duty.
Above that, a personal gain.
Above that, a personal gain.
As I faithfully discharge said duties.
As I faithfully discharge said duties.
As deputy fire chief to the best of my ability.
As deputy fire chief to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Please step forward. There you go. Jeff, can I say a few words?
Say a few words.
Okay. Thank you. Would Evan Delinsky please step forward? Evan is being promoted to battalion chief. Has been the Rolling Meadows Fire Department for 22 years. Hired in 1995 as a firefighter, paramedic, and then promoted to lieutenant in 2009. Evan was a commissioned officer in the Medical Service Corps of the US Army and graduated from University of Illinois with a Bachelor of Arts degree. He has served the department as a hazmat team leader, CPR program instructor and coordinator, as well as a member of the safety committee, fire station relocation team, and pension board trustee. As battalion chief, he directs the day-to-day operations and is the incident commander of a 24-hour shift. Evan, please raise your right hand.
I, Evan Delinsky, do solemnly swear.
I, Evan Delinsky, do solemnly swear.
That I will obey and support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will obey and support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
The rules and ordinances of the City of Rolling Meadows.
The rules and ordinances of the City of Rolling Meadows.
And the rules and regulations of the Rolling Meadows Fire Department.
And the rules and regulations of the Rolling Meadows Fire Department.
And that I hold a devotion to duty.
And that I hold a devotion to duty.
Above that, a personal gain.
Above that, a personal gain.
And I faithfully discharge said duties.
And I faithfully discharge said duties.
As battalion chief to the best of my ability.
As battalion chief to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Ready?
Yeah.
It's okay. Draw a little blood. We've got someone near him.
Stab in the chest.
You gonna say a few words?
I just want to thank all of the fine people that I've worked with for these years. They have supported me and given me great friendship and quality people to work with. And a thank you to the city as well for all the support. Thank you.
Thank you. Would Dan Cusek please join me to take your oath of office?
Dan has been in the fire service for 10 years and was hired as a firefighter, paramedic in 2007. Dan graduated from DePaul University with a BS in finance. Dan heads the newly-created fire critique committee, is a fire investigator, and a union representative for local 3075. Dan maintains the readiness and integrity of all structured firefighting gear and is an FAA licensed drone pilot. We're gonna have to talk more about that.
Please raise your right hand.
I, Daniel Cusek, do solemnly swear.
I, Daniel Cusek, do solemnly swear.
That I will obey and support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will obey and support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
The rules and ordinances of the City of Rolling Meadows.
Rules and ordinances of the City of Rolling Meadows.
And the rules and regulations of the Rolling Meadows Fire Department.
Rules and regulations of the Rolling Meadows Fire Department.
And that I hold a devotion to duty.
And I hold a devotion to duty.
Above that, a personal gain.
Above that, a personal gain.
As I faithfully discharge said duties.
As I faithfully discharge said duties.
As fire lieutenant to the best of my ability.
As fire lieutenant to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Another man. Another man a few words. Would Josh Gold please come forward to be sworn in? Good evening. Congratulations. Josh has been in the fire EMS arena for two years, working as a contract fire paramedic in Glen, Allen, Roselle, and Mundeline. He is certified base operations firefighter, in Illinois certified paramedic. He possesses a Bachelor of Art from the University of Iowa in Health and Sports Studies. Josh, please raise your right hand.
I, Josh Gold, do solemnly swear.
I, Josh Gold, do solemnly swear.
That I will obey and support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will obey and support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
The rules and ordinances of the City of Rolling Meadows.
The rules and ordinances of the City of Rolling Meadows.
And the rules and regulations of the Rolling Meadows Fire Department.
The rules and regulations of the Rolling Meadows Fire Department.
And that I hold a devotion to duty.
Hold a devotion to duty.
Above that, a personal gain.
Above that, a personal gain.
As I faithfully discharge said duties.
As I faithfully discharge said duties.
As firefighter to the best of my ability.
As firefighter to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Josh, would you say a few words? Oh, you're good. Okay. Would Tim Drain please come forward to be sworn in? Welcome. Tim previously worked for this family-run business and most recently is a full-time paramedic and a local private ambulance service. He scored number one on the current firefighter eligibility in which he competed against over 150 candidates. He is coming to us, a new firefighter, and is currently attending the nine-week basic firefighter operations class at the state's regional fire academy in Glenview. He will graduate in mid-December. Please raise your right hand.
I, Timothy Drain, do solemnly swear.
I, Timothy Drain, do solemnly swear.
That I will obey and support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will obey and support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
The rules and ordinances of the City of Rolling Meadows.
The rules and ordinances of the City of Rolling Meadows.
And the rules and regulations of the Rolling Meadows Fire Department.
And the rules and regulations of the Rolling Meadows Fire Department.
And that I hold a devotion to duty.
And I hold a devotion to duty.
Above that, a personal gain.
Above that, a personal gain.
As I faithfully discharge said duties.
As I faithfully discharge said duties.
As firefighter to the best of my ability.
As firefighter to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Moms must do it better. At this time, I would like us to take a short recess for three or four minutes so that the opportunity for those that have been promoted and those that have just been recently sworn in can have an opportunity for pictures up here. So, we'll take a short recess. Thank you. Thank you.[208.08][208.11](noise) I'd like to call us back into order. This brings us to the mayor's report. We've had the opportunity this month to go to the open house at the fire department, Wind Trust also, one of the new businesses in Rolling Meadows. We had the opportunity to go to their grand opening last week. They look like they're going to be great neighbors here. And again, we had another Chinese delegation looking and visiting Rolling Meadows. So it made it an interesting couple of weeks. Are there any warrant reports? Seeing none, we do have two folks that have signed in on the sign-in sheet tonight. The council meeting is now going to be opened to members of the audience for 20 minutes to address the city council on matters that are not... on matters that are on the agenda or regarding other issues. We ask that persons wishing to address the city council keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the city council as a whole through the mayor and profanity may not be used in any form. Would Kurt Jacobson, first signed, please come in?
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. I want to thank you for your time being here today and your service ongoing, serving the community. My name is Kurt Jacobson. I'm a petitioner for a special use permit for the uses of tattooing in Rolling Meadows as well as a text amendment for said purposes. I just wanted to let you guys know that I am here, present, and available for any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person to sign is Mr. Steve Hollis.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Welcome again.
Thank you. I'm just going to address the firehouse that's on the agenda tonight. I realize that it's probably been a voted-done deal. You've had a lot of meetings to discuss it and kind of got your own opinions on where you should move it and everything else. But one of the things that I looked at is that the $800,000 that you're paying for this piece of property, or two pieces of property, is kind of extreme for what you're getting. I look at right across the street, there's a lot that the city owns that is almost equal to what you're getting at over on Hicks. I looked on the GIS and I did some research on it. And the property that's on Hicks only really has an entrance that's on Hicks, which to me is a hindrance for a fire department. Across the street, you've got a corner lot. You could have an In-N-Out on both sides of the property and on the northern part of property. As regard to the property across the street, it's 1.1 acres. Cross over on Hicks, it's 1.3. What are you getting? Not a whole lot more for $800,000. Again, this is money that you're spending that's kind of like real money. It's out of our general fund. And I understand you're going to try and get the money back by selling the other properties once you've moved the stations. But again, that's money that's out in the future. Right now, you're going to dwindle our general fund by almost $2 million? For what? Two fire stations? Okay, that's great. But again, that's 18 months out. And that's another thing that I kind of strongly disagree with. 18 months to build two fire stations? There's a real problem there. You should be putting this on the fast track. They should be built extremely quickly. Get your fire stations transitioned over to new locations and start using them, not 18 months down the road. So in my opinion, the fire station for Hicks Road shouldn't be there. It should be across the street downtown. It's a good piece of property. We don't pay anything. You're not impacting our general fund. And you can start moving on this. And the other thing that I want to know is if it goes through, which it probably will tonight, how fast are you going to have plans? How fast is the new project plan going to be available? How fast is the new bonds going to be available? Those are all things that are going to impact us in a great sense. And I want to see some fast-tracking on all that. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments tonight. This brings us to the part of the meeting where we do ordinances in for the second reading. Ordinance number 17-32 is a text amendment to allow assisted living facilities as a special use in T-1 District. A special use for an assisted living facility. A signed appeal for property located at 3505 Ogunquin Road and 3477 Ogunquin Road, Holiday Inn, Holiday Inn Express. There have been two changes to the ordinance since September 26, 2017. The first, the text amendment will provide for adding assisted living facilities to subsection J of section 122-15614 rather than designate assisted living facilities as a separate special use. The reason for their change is due to the current subsection J provided for parking requirements and other requirements for senior living centers which should be applicable to assisted living facilities. Second, the petitioner needs to address parking. The petitioner will appear before the Planning and Zoning Commission to present its parking plan. As a result, the attached ordinance provides that this ordinance is subject to the city council approving parking. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Diastis has made that. Do we have a second? Mr. Jacobson made the second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Diastis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I strongly urge the council to approve this. Mr. Patel has been a good businessman in the city, and I think this keeps the property alive and moving forward. So I strongly encourage everyone to vote yes on this.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Matts.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Veenbos.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed. The ordinance is adopted. This brings us to ordinance B, number 17-38. Approve a tax abatement. This ordinance, if adopted, would approve a tax abatement for the city. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Mr. Cannon has made that, and Mr. Baner has seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Veenbos.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed. This ordinance is adopted. C, ordinance number 17-39. Approve the special services area number five tax levy. This ordinance, if adopted, would approve the special service tax number five tax levy. Is there a motion to adopt that ordinance? Mr. Cannon has made it, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Veenbos.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed. The ordinance is adopted. Number D, ordinance number 17-40. Approve the purchase and sales agreement for fire station 2320 and 2350 Hicks Road. This ordinance, if adopted, would approve a purchase and sales agreement for the property located at 2320 and 2350 Hicks Road for the purpose of building a fire station. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Mr. Cannon has made that, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Ms. Majikis.
Thank you. I'm just putting it out there that I'm voting against this, as I've all along have voted against moving both fire stations. So I just wanted to remark that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gallo.
Regardless of the outcome of this vote, I would like it to be noted that going forward, I would request that the council receive regularly monthly cost reports, including projections based on the original estimates, as well as progress reports and cost reports.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Any other? Mr. Veenbos.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I strongly am supportive of this. It's been delayed way too long, and the longer we wait, the more it costs to Mr. Gallo's point. So let's move forward quickly.
Thank you.
Cost effectively.
Thank you, Mr. Veenbos. Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Veenbos.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
Majikis.
No.
Gallo.
No.
Five in favor and two opposed. The ordinance is adopted. This brings us to the consent ordinances. The next item on the agenda consists of two items, E and F. Does any alderman wish to remove an item from the consent ordinances? Mr. Veenbos.
E.
E. Since there are only two items, we no longer have a consent ordinance. Ordinance E is to approve a text amendment to allow a fine art and tattoo studio as a special use in the M-1 District and a special use for fine arts and tattoo studio for the property located at the 1500 Hicks Road. This ordinance, if adopted, would allow fine art and tattoo studios as a special use in the M-1 District. Fine art and tattoo studios are not currently permitted or special use anywhere in the City of Rolling Meadows. Thus, the petitioner is seeking to amend... seeking the text amendment as well as a special use. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mayor.
Ms. Majikis has made it. We have a second. Mr. Veenbos.
Yeah, quick comment. As most of you know, I've been against having anything other than manufacturing in an M-1 District. And this is a little bit different. This is a commercial-type situation where we're actually making tax dollars off the businesses there. So I just want to make a clear distinction as we go through the vote and for how I vote with respect to the M-1 District and what this commercial... it's commercial. It's in like a commercial area. I realize it's not true blue manufacturing. I just wanted to make that distinction. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Veenbos. Any other comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Diastis.
Yes.
Veenbos.
No.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
With six yes and one opposed, it does proceed forward. Ordinance F. Approve the application for a Class A2 liquor license new owners of the Asian Tokyo 1655 Ogunquin Road. This ordinance, if adopted, would approve a liquor license application for the new owners of the Asian Tokyo. Do I have a motion? Mr. Baner has made it. Do I second? Thank you. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Veenbos.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed. This ordinance will be moved forward for second reading. This brings us to new business, the motion to approve the bill... payment of bills on warrants 102417. The next item of business is a motion to approve the warrants from 102417 as presented by the Finance Department. Is there a motion to approve the warrant? Mr. Cannon has made that motion. Has it been... it's been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
Here.
Bud.
Here. And yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Veenbos.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. This brings us to the consent resolutions. The next item on the agenda is the consent.
Cannon.
That leaves five items. The chair declares it in order for one motion to consider five resolutions without debate. Is there such a motion?
So moved, Mayor.
Ms. Majikis has made that, and it has been seconded. The question is, shall all five of the resolutions be adopted? I, resolution number 17-R-21, award contract for street lighting installation on Apollo Drive and Squibb Drive. This resolution, if adopted, would award a contract for the installation of new street lighting and controller on Apollo Drive on the Squibb Avenue. Resolution J, number 17-R-122, is award a contract for the field survey work on the proposed Kirchhoff 2018 pavement resurfacing process, project. This resolution, if adopted, would award a contract for civil engineering services for the proposed Kirchhoff Road pavement resurfacing project scheduled for late summer and autumn 2018. K is resolution number 17-R-123, authorize negotiations for acquisition of easement for Brookwood. This resolution, if adopted, will authorize the city attorney to offer Brookwood Condominium Association the sum of $66,300 to acquire additional storm water detention along the southern portion of the condominium property. L, resolution number 17-R-124, award a contract for asphalt payments, pavement improvements associated with Squibb Drive Avenue in construction at Waichai American Corporation. This resolution, if adopted, would award a contract for the construction relocation of 12 parking spaces, the Waichai America facility at 3100 Gulf Road, to accommodate the reconstruction and extension of Squibb Drive. M, resolution number 17-R-125, to approve the purchase of a pole camera for sewer. This resolution, if adopted, would authorize the proposed purchase of a new pole camera for use by the Public Works Department, but Public Department Utilities Division for the inspection of storm sewer and sanitary sewer pipes directly without having to have employees to send into the manhole. Again, the question is, shall all five of these resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Matts.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Veenbos.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed. Those now move forward. This brings us back to resolution H. Award a contract for the Kirchhoff Road resurfacing project design engineering services. This resolution, if adopted, would award a contract, professional services contract for the design engineering work associated with proposed pavement resurfacing of Kirchhoff Road currently scheduled for fiscal year 2018. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mayor.
Ms. Majikis has made that motion, has been seconded. Mr. Cannon, you have pulled this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just had a question that I was hoping either Barry or Fred could answer. We're going to pay Burke close to $95,000. I was wondering if you could tell me if that's going to come out of this year's budget or next year's budget, first of all?
I would expect most of it to be out of next year's budget. Probably all will get done this year is the field survey work that was just approved a few minutes ago. So, the bulk of the Phase 2 work can't start until IDOT approves the contract. If the council approves the contract, we then wait for Springfield, which can take 60 days or more to do. So, it's likely to be a fiscal year 2018 expenditure.
Okay. And then the sister question to that, will this $95,000 be part of the $500,000 that we're paying, or is it over and above the $500,000?
It should be part of the approximately $500,000, $500,000. That's the 20% local share that's included.
Okay. Thank you. I'd also like to offer an amendment to this. I firmly believe, we seem like we're going to move ahead on this project. I would really like us to consider and actually do the work on the median strip. It's going to cost a lot of money. But as I spoke earlier in a former, earlier council meeting, I think it's kind of crazy for us to put down all brand-new pavement, then a year after rip out the middle of the pavement to redo the median strip. I'd like to get it all done at one time. I know it's going to put some constraints on our budget, but I think it's important that we do it at the same time. And I would like to see Burke engineer that at the same time. So, I'm offering an amendment that they would, you know, charge us whatever they're charged us, but add it to this, this project right now.
Okay. Mr. Vogel.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We, just for council's information, we just received today a proposal from Christopher Burke to do that meeting, where we have been in discussions with them to include the design. But because of the IDOT contract, we have to do that meeting design separately. So, we are planning to proceed with that.
Do you know, can you tell us what that number is yet, or is that still private?
I believe it's well under $10,000, so it likely won't come back for council action. But certainly, city manager and myself will review that in the upcoming days.
I mean, you could either.
It could be an amendment.
You could be an amendment now, or they could bring it forward when they have a better, a sharper pencil on costs.
You know, as long as, as long as people understand where my, what my position is. I think, I just think it's not prudent for us to go ahead, fix the highway, and then work on the median strip the year after. It just seems to be kind of.
Understood.
So, that's, as long as we're to do that, I can pull back on, on offering an amendment. As long as, you know, staff understands where I'm coming from.
Okay.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
He's going to withdraw, you remember?
I withdraw.
Yes. Mr. Cannon has withdrawn the amendment.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Veenbos.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Veenbos.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, that will, amendment will move forward. This brings the council to other businesses and reports. The mayor has no appointments or proclamation. Does the city clerk have a report?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Then we will now go off to Mr. Crumstock, community items of interest.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, this is a month with the 5th Tuesday, so you're going to have some November items that are included into this one. But before I start, I actually want to thank Battalion Chief Colin Finley for sitting up over here. I tapped him near the end because we had so many people here, I wanted them to actually participate for the pending and actually spend some time. So, I do appreciate last minute pulling you into this one. But obviously, this Saturday, the Rolling Meadows Police Department and DEA will be doing another national prescription drug takeback. And again, this takeback will be here at City Hall in the parking lot. It happens between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM. And what I would also tell you is that Chief Nowacki and the police department also will be dealing with child safety seat checks. So, great for, opportunity for everybody else. This might be our last one that we actually do when we pull the truck out to City Hall because just as a reminder, and we'll also be putting this in the news and views again, we do have a gray box here at City Hall on the second floor, right by the police main desk, that actually Cook County takes back prescriptions, and it's greatly appreciated. I can tell you that they're here maybe once a month because it does get filled up. But again, this Saturday, we do have a drug takeback. And again, it is here in the parking lot, and it's from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Coming up on Tuesday, October 31st, that's the 5th Tuesday, that's why we don't have any meetings. Halloween trick-or-treat hours for the city of Rolling Meadows is 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And again, a reminder that beginning in next week, we will have that big tub, if you want to call it. If a child collects a treat that you have a concern about, please dump it into that container that will be out here at City Hall. Reminder that Sunday, November 5th, is daylight saving time ends, so please remember to fall back an hour so you're not late coming to work on Monday. When you change your clocks, please remember to change your batteries and your smoke alarms and carbon monoxide detectors. Monday, November 6th, early refuse set-out begins. Place refuse at the curb no earlier than 3:00 PM the day prior to pickup. And in conjunction with that comment, please remember that Friday, December 1st, is the last day for yard waste collection. The other part is City Hall will be closed on Friday, November 10th in recognition of Veterans Day. Please remember to thank a veteran. Regular refuse routes will be observed, so there is no delay for refuse during this holiday. November 17th, as I mentioned before, November 17th to 19th, the Friends of the Rolling Meadows Library Book Sale will be happening at the library at 3110 Martin Lane. It's a great opportunity to buy books, books on tape, all different kinds of things, as I mentioned before. And if you remember from Executive Director Dave Ruff's presentation, it's a great way to clean out that garage for them. But that's my nice way of putting the pitch. The hours are obviously stated on some bookmarks and throughout this items and topics, not to mention actually on this point in time. Coming up typically on Monday or right after that, Rolling Meadows again has partnered with the United States Marine Corps Reserve to collect toys for children in need for the Marine Toy for Tod program. Residents, friends, businesses may deliver new unwrapped toys. And we have drop boxes here at City Hall and also at the Rolling Meadows Library. Toy donations will be accepted from November 6th through Friday, December 8th. Then, starting real soon, around the same time, November 6th, that the City Swank and Elgin Recycling will be conducting its holiday light extension cord wire recycling program. And again, the two boxes are here at City Hall. It's on the west corner of City Hall that you'll see the boxes. This recycling program, thanks to Elgin Recycling, will go all the way until February 16th, 2018. And obviously, I don't have to say too much about this next part, but leaves are starting to fall. A lot of the rain has knocked more of them down. Just a friendly reminder that residents should not dump or blow leaves in the street. We do have street sweeper operating throughout the community, and then the contracted sweeper actually starts.
Next week.
Next week. So, the final item obviously that we have before this is what we do at the end of the month, and those are future topics for other committees. The two other committees, specifically Economic Development Committee will be meeting Tuesday, November 7th at 6:00 PM. Tentative items scheduled for this meeting deal with business list, feedback and distribution, and new list of contacts. Creating a Business Expo Subcommittee, obviously, staff has started already working on that. Business advocate, highlight, obviously, one thing that is being mentioned tonight before the City Council, but the Economic Development Committee will be discussing Alderman Diastis's restaurant incentive discussion. And then there's some other items of interest in the chamber commerce update. Also, on that night, Tuesday, November 7th at 7:30 PM, there will be three public hearings tentatively scheduled, and they are consisting of the preliminary approval of an eight-lot subdivision with variance for property located at 1600 and 1620 Vermont Street. Obviously, the petitioner is BJS Builders and Remodeling, Bradley Schneider. The second one will be a rehearing of special use for car wash and outdoor vacuums for Fuller Car Wash at 2765 Ogunquin Road. That's in our C2 district. Christian Kalskoff from Corporate Design and Development is the petitioner for that one again. And then the final one is a variance to the city code of ordinances, section 18245, regarding the parking stalls that we just mentioned earlier in one of our resolutions at 3405 Ogunquin Road. Mr. Patel is obviously the petitioner for the Holiday Inn at that point in time. And then there will be a short discussion with Planning and Zoning Commission about requiring signs as part of all notification for all petitions as they come up. With that, those are items of interest.
And we come back to Mr. Crumstock for new business.
There are actually, for the September new business list, which is listed, there are four items, there are three of them that are non-home occupation. Obviously, we like to give a little shout-out to Tail Chasers Incorporated. It's a dog care and dog walking location. We just figured we would give one thing. And obviously, Arlington Dermatology actually moved in, and they're at 5301 Keystone Court. So, with that, those are the four new businesses for September.
Thank you, Mr. Crumstock. The next item, we're going to move around a little bit because we, this is an item that belongs on the committee of the whole. We don't do discussion items in a regular city council meeting. Anyone is free with items that are not on the agenda to bring information forward. So, we're going to roll that over to matters not on the agenda. And Mr. Diastis and I had a brief conversation about this on Friday, and he feels it's important to get it forward, bring it forward to the council. So, Mr. Diastis, matters not on the agenda. It's yours.
Thank you. I have taken time to put together what I'm calling the Kirchhoff Road Full Service Restaurant Incentive Zone. The council has gotten copies of it. Basically, I've defined a full-service restaurant. And it says basically, a full-service restaurant is established in which customers can be served their meals at the table, receive table services, and typically pay at the end of the meal. I've outlined the incentive zone, and in here, I'm saying the incentive, qualifying incentive zone is Kirchhoff Road, west of Wilkie and east of Illinois State Route 53. And then I've put together several incentives. And again, the council all has copies of this, so I'm not going to go into all the detail. But if you do have a question you want to ask me afterwards, please feel free to. The whole intent here is to get this out because I want council to see it before it was presented to the Economic Development Committee, and then I'll come back to council. So, first, I'm saying we should have a referral incentive. So, any rental property, for example, there may be vacancies at the Jewel Center, as an example. Any individual, broker, business representative, or agent that is able to refer a new restaurant to the zone is going to get a $3,500 finder's fee. So rather than just put the burden of finding this on one person, any individual, broker, business representative, or agent that can refer a new restaurant to the zone will receive a check for seventy-five hundred dollars. Again, there are some parameters that have to be met, and we'll vet those up in the future. So now that we've got twenty-four, twenty-five thousand people looking for restaurants for us, here's the incentive for the restaurant. If they rent a piece of property, the city will offer them the app to waive all permit fees, and then offer them a choice of three incentives. Either rental incentive, free for three months where the city will pay the rent, a check from the city for five thousand dollars, or food and beverage tax sharing with that restaurant. And again, details will be vetted out in the future, but it's, needless to say, it's something, if you're a restaurateur, if you, location is a primary incentive, but you also need to either have capital, or you need to have some cash flow. This gives the, that individual the opportunity to pick if they need cash flow or if they need capital. And then finally, is the purchase incentive. Again, with twenty-four, twenty-five thousand people trying to find a restaurant or two for us, we would waive the permit fees. There's a purchase incentive of ten thousand dollars. There is a proposal to reduce the property tax to the city of Rolling Meadows, or to do a food and beverage tax sharing agreement. Again, it's up to the person who's purchasing and building a restaurant to decide what is more important, and staff and council will vet these all out and have certain criteria so that, you know, place has got to be in operation for so long first, and it's got to have a certain occupancy, several other things that staff will put into here, but as a basic premise, this gets us started, it gives us something to talk about at the committee of the whole meeting, but I wanted the city to get a, staff and council to get a feel for this so that we can start to move on this thing, because typically, ideas take so long to come about, and I just want to try to fast-track this with everything else that we're doing on Kirchhoff Road. So, quick one, Mayor. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present.
And thank you for bringing that idea forward. Other matters not on the agenda, Mr. Veenbos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Say, I thought it would be due time to give yourself, as well as the council, and as the public, a kind of an update on what a business point person like myself has been doing, as you named me after I left the position as interim mayor. And towards that end, there's four, four points I'd like to just bring up tonight real quickly. First of all, obviously, we finished the business survey with the results. Along with Mr. Crumstock and Martha, we put together a thirty-sixty-ninety-day plan with dates and goals that have been put together, and that also included some, in particular, business activity with respect to what came out of the business survey. So along with that, in order to make this business survey work properly, one of the areas that we talked about was business permitting. So I know that, and I don't mind me saying Martha Corner, along with Fred Vogt, have been working on somewhat of a value stream mapping in order to streamline the business permit process, and they have met with various people, companies that have come forward. In fact, I'm not sure if they're for public yet, Mr. Crumstock, so I won't say. He said no. But we're putting together a quicker plan so you can get permits much, much faster. So, all in all, I'm pleased with what I see so far. You know, it's the execution now, now that we have the business survey results back, and the remainder of the job that goes along with the thirty-sixty-ninety-day program will be the action plan that goes with the business survey that was presented last week, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Veenbos, and I thank you for some other members of the council who have stepped up at times, have been helping when we've had the, either Chinese delegations or other, other, as we're trying to move forward with economic development. Any other matters not on the agenda? Mr. Crumstock.
Seeing that you opened that avenue, obviously, we've talked about the Chinese delegation now twice. Last time, and it was almost a month ago, we do thank Alderman Veenbos for doing the intro, and then we do thank Alderman Gallo for doing the intro this Monday when they were here. So we are discussing, and we will have further discussions, obviously, with Twenty-First Century and see what else goes, but we do appreciate when we do have Alderman show up for that and obviously make the intro for the city of Rolling Meadows.
Thank you. Also, a thank you to Linda Valentine for hosting that event. Any other items not on the agenda? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.